I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of Joliet Junior College, District 525. Joan, would you call a roll, please?
Broderick?
Present.
Crowder? Crowder? Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Mahalik?
Present.
Morales?
Here.
O'Connell?
Here.
Washington?
Present.
And Wanderlech?
Present. I'd like to welcome everybody who virtually joined us this evening and the people that are here. At this time, how about the Pledge of Allegiance from Mr. Rob Gallick, because it'll be his last time. Unless he decides to stay.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 1.0.5, Public Comments. Do we have any public comments, Ms. Tierney?
I have not received any comments to my email, any requests.
Okay. Moving on, 1.1, ERP Update.
I'd like to invite Jerome Godlock to provide the board with a year-end summary on the ERP implementation process before we kick into the summer semester. Jerome?
Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, and I'm sharing a screen, starting with the ERP modernization. So if everyone can see that, I would like to say good evening to everyone and the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees and President Mitchell and the President's Cabinet. Again, today, I'm here to give you an update on the ERP modernization project, also known as Mission Possible. Just to let everyone know and give you an update, we had shared at my last meeting with you, which would have been in March, I shared with you our overall timeline with the go-live schedule of January of 2021. As everyone is aware, as we approached our planning phase, which is the first phase of our project, as we were closing that out, we ended up running into COVID-19. And working along with JJC, there was a decision to take a break or a project suspension for one month so that JJC could focus and focus on turning this school into a remote learning school for the students. With that said, our project did take a one-month suspension. I'll talk about what that actually means for the project. The good news is, is that as that timing came, we were just completing our first phase of the project, which was the planning stage. And so we were able to essentially button up the project at a very good breaking point so as not to leave a lot of things that were partially done. We were able to kind of finish that phase. So since that time, on March 26, when we took that suspension, we then started up one month later with the project, and our goal was to determine, when we started up the project, what impacts that would have with the schedule. And so we were able to come up with new dates based on the suspension, and we received the executive steering committee gave us the go-ahead to start the project again. So on May 11, we had a formal orientation and kickoff with the overall project team consisting of about 50 employees within JJC that will be working on the project at some ebbs and flows throughout the project. Thereafter, we started our second phase of the project, which what we call Workday Alignment Sessions. And these sessions essentially take place across all the organization as it relates to human resources, finances, and the procurement areas. Those are the key areas that we were working with. In total, there were a series of meetings for approximately six weeks in which we captured a lot of the information and specifications that JJC will need for Workday to do to manage our systems moving forward. So as we think about the suspension and what it means to our project, our new go-live date is now set for March of 2021. So we actually moved the project from February to March. By doing that, and again, by doing that, we did have some additional time that we were actually able to add to our testing phase and our building stage, your configuring and prototyping phase. And so what that will do is give JJC more time to test the system, to make sure everything is working the way that, you know, it is planned to work. Again, with that said, where we are today, we are finishing up that architect phase that I talked about with the meetings where we've outlined to our implementer, AVAP, all of the needs for JJC. And so by the next time we meet, going into July and October, we will be starting to test the system. And so we start off with doing unit testing and then rolling that into what we call an end-to-end testing, where we actually test all the processes from beginning of a process all the way to the end. So if we think in terms of human resources, it can be from recruiting a new potential employee all the way to the retirement of that employee. So these are some of the things that we'll be working on and we're gearing up for as July approaches going into October. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd love to entertain any questions if anyone has any.
Do we have any additional costs that were occurring because of all the COVID stuff?
Due to the extension of the project, there is a slight cost. Those costs, and Rob can probably chime in a little more, but are being covered by some contingency plans that were already in place, contingency dollars in our budget, and that's how we're managing that.
Thank you.
What else? Take it, Jerome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is 1.2, A Moment of Silence for the Following Individuals. Johnny Johnson, retired professor, Social and Behavioral Sciences. James Calvert-Zouz, father of Cassandra Splea, Information Technology. Teresa de Rosario, aunt of Mae Elgato.
Elgato.
Elgato, Information Technology. And of course, our good friend Larry Walsh, Sr., executive. Thank you. Item 1.3, Recognition of Special Guests. We have the people in the room here with us tonight, and I don't know how many people are Zooming or watching or listening or anything else, but thank you for coming to the JJC Board meeting. Item 1.4, Selected Reports. Dr. Mitchell, anything?
No, I think other than the fact that we just recognized retirees like we've done in the last two months, just...
Okay. Items 1.4 through 1.8.
Through 1.4.6.
1.
Right. 1.4.6.
1.6, where the double stars are.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1.4.1 through 1.4.6. Trustee Approval of Resolution Honoring Retirees Pam Dilde, Peak Commander Julia Bradley, Gladys Hughes, Vivian Van Dunk, and Roberta Kafka.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Joan, call a roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder? Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 1.7, Faculty Union Report. Dr. Marsink, is he with us tonight?
I don't believe so. Joan, did Dr. Marsink say he didn't have a report, just to confirm?
He did not. He indicated he was going to have a report, but he was not able to get it put together.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 1.4, Adjunct Faculty Written Report from Laurel Disco. Moving on to 1.5 minutes of the regular meeting of May 13. If there's no additions or corrections, could I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second from somebody. Joan, call a roll, please.
Okay, and did you get a second, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go with O'Connell. O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder? Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 1.6, Communications. Any further communications, Ms. Tierney?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
Item 1.7, Approval of the Agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. Joan, call a roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder? Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 1.8, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
I'd like to pull some items. Is this one? We need a motion?
Motion and a second first.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Okay.
I have some items to pull as well after trustee Morales.
Okay, so item 2.1, 1.3.
2.13.
2.113. And... Hold on. 2.16.
2.16.
4.6. 4.7.
Okay, and 4.7?
Uh-huh, 4.8.
4.8.
4.10.
4.10.
4.11.
4.11.
4.12 and 4.13.
Okay. Trustee Nancy, you've got some?
Yes. 2.1.7. Through 2.1.12.
All of them?
Okay.
Yes, correct. There's also 2.7.3.
2.7.3.
And 2.7.4.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan, call a roll, please.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder? And Wanderlech?
Yes. Okay, moving on to 2.1.6. 2.1.3, Mr. Chairman. 2.1.3? Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear that one.
I didn't hear that one.
Yeah, that was the first one that... 2.113.
I thought she did 2.1.7.
Yeah.
That was the first one that Alicia requested, so...
I thought it was 2.1.13.
It was.
Yeah. 2.1.13.
2.1.6, okay.
Okay, 2.
We need a motion?
Motion to discuss?
And motion and a second discussion now.
Okay, so this is for 2.16, correct? Okay, so this interim, my question with this position is that we are asking to do a hire a firm, which is gonna incur about $23,000, $24,000 to conduct a search. Excuse me, I gotta take this off. I feel like I can't speak properly with this mask on. So the reason that I would like to recommend that we do not do that, invest in spending extra monies, is I think we have, that should be a resource that we go to when we have conducted internal interviews and we found nobody that's qualified or, you know, meets the criteria. I think there's a lot of internal people that do meet it, and I'd like for us to do that first, conduct an internal interview before we go outside. And also, because that's the only position, from all the interims, I notice that's the only position that we're asking to do a search, an external search. And maybe you don't see it, but it doesn't look fair that that's the only position that we're asking to hire an outside firm. It's got a lot of people feeling a certain kind of way about that, which I'm even gonna dare as far as saying that that is part of the systemic problem that we see right now that, you know, in America, that how some systems work for some people and don't work for others. It's one person that's being asked to conduct a search for. Yes, it is. All of these are high-profile positions, all the interims are. But we're only conducting an outside search for one, and it just makes it look inequitable. So I would like for the board, I'd like for the rest of my colleagues on the board to chime in on that, if you have any other thoughts. I'm willing to hear what everybody has to say.
I did have a question for Dr. Mitchell, and as I was reading through the comments, it says the consultant early on said there was no viable candidate for the job in-house. But then, in your remarks, Dr. Mitchell, you said that internal candidates would be considered as part of the process. For me, that's somewhat contradictory. Either there's a viable candidate that needs to go through the process, or there is no viable candidate, and that's the reasoning for the outside consultant or external, externally.
Okay, so much of what was in the consultant's report was kept confidential because obviously personnel problems are typically not disclosed in public. But if you recall, P4 was hired to conduct a cultural assessment of the department, and within the recommendations, they came back and they highly recommended that we conduct an external search because largely due to the challenges that we've had or some of the challenges that we've had in the police department for some time. And they felt that it would be in our best interest to go out and conduct a search through a search firm. We did evaluate two firms, had proposals from two firms, to conduct a wider search to ensure that we were inclusive and throughout the process, to make sure that the consultants that we brought in are gonna conduct a very extensive background check because the police chief, as you can imagine, as a municipality, is much different than your typical, I wanna say, your typical employee of the college. So they're responsible of actually overseeing a licensed police department in addition to working with the college, so it's very unique. And so within their recommendation, they strongly encouraged us to go out and use a firm, which is what we did. We evaluated two firms to bring in. Now, I say that because that doesn't preclude anyone internal, from internal, from applying through the process and going through that process. The first two phases, the search firm, you know, like what I shared within that cost is their advertising fees, which is a not-to- exceed. And the first two processes, they will conduct the advertising, they will shortlist. Phase two, they'll narrow down that search to potentially 10 to 15 candidates. The college will have an opportunity to review those candidates and those applications, and then at that point, they'll conduct further background checks and then come forward with a potential three to five, whatever, you know, depending on how many viable candidates we have. At that point, the search we brought back onto campus, we will, and I mentioned that Pat Van Dyne will assist me, we will conduct an internal search. So those searches will be open forums with employees, with student government, the students, with community members, with Board of Trustees, because obviously, this position is highly visible because of the two hats, basically. We have to ensure that they're engaged with the students. That's a critical component, obviously, with our employees. The search firm that we're using also conducted a search for Oakden Community College. I spoke with their president. She said they did an excellent job. They were able to review. Their current police chief has been there for a year. They haven't had any problems, but they went through that very similar process. I can tell you, I believe it's Aurora University Benedictine. It just, for the police chief position, it's just unique. And so that's why, you know, listening to the consultants and best practices, reaching out to others, that's why that decision was made. No disrespect to the current in-house, you know, members. They can apply, just like any open position. Anyone's welcome to apply.
Thank you. I wasn't on the board at the time the consultants were hired.
No, that's absolutely fine. And in light of...
...the information because...
In light of everything that we're dealing right now, I think an extensive background check is critical, you know, so...
I absolutely agree. I'm just, like I said, looking for information, and when I saw that the consulting firm said there was no viable candidates, but then the interim has a very extensive resume, so I don't know if the consultant, if he was even, you know, part of that during the consulting and the culture that you're speaking of. So I'm just trying to get, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up.
I'm glad you asked the question. They interviewed everyone in the police department, from the chief all the way through. The consultant did.
Let me be clear, though.
Yes.
P4 did, but P4 is not doing the search.
Correct.
Because they felt that they were conflicted out, which is why they recommended two other additional consulting companies so that those people could have an independent assessment.
Absolutely.
So just so we're clear, that when we use the term consultant, you have to be specific. P4, the group that did the P4 assessment, is different from the group that's leading the search for the chief.
Yes. So you said because they felt it would conflict?
They felt that because they had done an internal cultural assessment, that they didn't want to be involved in the search for the chief because they didn't want that process to be tainted in any way because they gave recommendations to the college based on what their assessment was. And so they did not want to be involved because they wanted it to be an independent evaluation process.
Right. I don't think it's necessary. It is a very highly visible position. I think the only most visible position we've had is when, as I mentioned via email, is when we made a decision to hire a president. And even then, we didn't go through a search. So I feel like it's, we've set a precedence. I think we have really good candidates internally that we can interview first, and if we find there's nothing, you know, that they are not qualified or they don't meet the criteria, then yes, let's invest the money and hire somebody to conduct. I just feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, and...
In my opinion, it's just one trustee. As Judy said before, anybody that's internal can apply. And with the state of the country as it is right now, I would like this to be as transparent as we can with the individual company doing the research. I don't want to be accused of saying, hey, you gave so-and-so the job because he's a good old boy and he works here and this and that. I would rather be transparent. And the police department is, it's a lot different than the president. I mean, they've got their own set of rules, they've got, you know, they've... In my opinion, I don't mind spending the little bit of money on this, but it's up to you guys. You've gotta vote on it.
I think, in my opinion, Dr. Mitchell has made a good decision. She's got her action plan. She knows what the police department's about. She's been here the whole time. The prior police chief was here. It's time for a breath of fresh air to remove all of the damaging, if you want to call it, damaging innuendos that have been placed on it. And anyone in the department, I think if anyone is chosen, and this is my opinion, I think we need a breath of fresh air, somebody new that can bring in something that will relive that department and make it fresh again because right now it's too tainted. I agree, it is, but... But we're not HR. We're letting our CEO run it. I think we, as trustees, have made our comments. I think we need to move on.
Any other discussion?
As long as internal candidates are able to apply, I think that's fair. And that's generally the way that things work. But I was just concerned that there were no internal candidates that were going to be able to apply because of whatever has happened in the past. I don't think one person, or even if there's a qualified person, I don't think they should be held accountable for what someone else does.
Exactly.
They should be given the opportunity, if they're qualified, they should be given the opportunity to apply.
Any other comments on this item?
Chairman, can I just make one brief comment? Thank you. It's the end of the year, so... So trustee Morales, what I would like to respond, outside of this position, you know, the internal candidates, we do in many cases have viable internal candidates that when we go through the process is very costly, in general, 1,500 employees is very costly. Prior to me, okay, I don't want to say when this happened, we used to have, we would post internal first, and then if we didn't have viable candidates, we would go to an external. One of my predecessors changed that philosophy at the college. Do I agree with you with moving that back? If we can move that back and we can work with our attorney to make sure that everything we're doing is legal and compliant? Absolutely, I agree with you. If we can promote from within, we talk about that all the time. That is critically important. It's just unfortunately, we haven't had an opportunity with HR to get to that point, to look into that. But is it something on the books to review going forward? Absolutely, I agree with you 100%.
Thank you. But that's the only position that, for all these high-profile positions, that we're gonna, it looks bad, that's all I'm saying.
And I understand, but again, think of the visibility of this position right now. And all of these other interim positions, we are posting through, you know, Chronicle of Higher Ed nationally, I mean, across the board, we're doing that, absolutely. But for this one, in light of what we're dealing with right now and looking at the past year reflection, working so closely with P4, I absolutely believe this is the right decision at this time.
Will the board be able, I think you mentioned something earlier, that the board is gonna be able to weigh in or be part of like the...
I would like you, absolutely, to be part of that interview process.
Okay, then if we're allowed to be part of the process, then I'm a little bit more comfortable with that.
Okay, and I believe I put that in my letter. I don't recall because my mind's going in all different directions. I believe I put it in, but absolutely, the board will be part of that process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't think it looks bad. I think what the president's idea to go forward, as she suggested, we should pay attention to that, and that would be my vote.
With that, if there's no more discussion, Joan, call a roll, please.
Morales?
No.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Broderick?
Yes.
Crowder? Garcia-Guian?
No.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Next item, 2.1.7.
It's going to be a combination of 2.1.7 through 2.1.11. I just had a question overall.
They have to be individual?
We have to go item by item, Nancy.
Okay, sounds good. We can do that. It's going to be the same question. I just wanted...
We need a motion and a second.
Motion. So moved.
Hold on a second, before you make your motion, if trustee Garcia-Guian wants to make a motion to discuss those at one time, you can do that if she has the same questions for all of them, presuming that they're all gonna be approved in a block. That's okay to do.
She can make a motion to approve 2.1.7 through 2.1.11 and ask her questions and consider them all at one time. But they are all then considered at one time.
Okay, that's fine.
That's okay.
You still have to have a motion, though.
Yes, you do. And it has to be a motion to approve items 2.1.7 through 2.1.11. That would then open the discussion up for those items.
Okay, did you get that, Nancy?
Yes, I'm good with that, yep.
You make a motion to approve 2.17 through 2.111?
Yes.
And then we need a second.
So moved.
Okay, now discussion.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to check on the status of us trying to find full-time candidates to fill those particular positions. I know that at this time, we have not obtained a candidate, but what are, what are, what are our next steps?
So for, oh, okay. So for each of these positions, Academic Affairs, Administrative Services, the CFO, for all of the positions, the cabinet positions, Robbs, Randys, and Melindas, all of the search firms or the search committees have been identified. For the Executive Director of HR, which the new position will be a chief title, which is a higher-level title comparable to the Chief Information Officer, that will be chaired by Dr. Tracy Morris, who worked very closely with the HR department. For the police chief we spoke about, for the Vice President of Academic Affairs, I have asked Dr. Farmer to chair that search. She's working together with the Academic Division to pull together her team. For Robbs, Vice President of Administrative Services, you see, we split that in two just due to the workload that we have right now with the pandemic and the financial piece as related to the CARES Act and the ERP. That will be chaired by Janice Rides, and she has put together her team. The interim Dean of Nursing is just temporary because once we hire the VP of Academic Affairs, Jory will move back to her faculty position. The employment of the temporary Dean of Arts and Sciences, this was a failed search. And the thought process right now was to go out. We held, we posted the position for, I believe it was five or six days. And we had a team of two academic deans and two faculty members that shortlisted and selected Dr. Dave Nays, who worked for the college, and he will come back on a temporary basis. And the thought process for that position is we will not post until we're close to hiring the VP of Academic Affairs to allow the vice president to hire their own direct report of the dean. And so all of those committees, the positions were posted. I believe the closing date is Monday, the 29th. However, we have it posted until filled. The committees will begin the process after the 29th, start reviewing candidates. But let's just say we, you know, go through the candidates and we don't have a solid pool. It allows them to go back to see if anyone has applied afterwards and bring them in. Or sometimes what we've had is you bring in candidates and you interview them. And then, you know, maybe out of six of them, two of them are ready to go forward, but you're not comfortable with the other four. So they can look to see if anyone else has applied and consider bringing them in the process. So all the positions have been posted with the closing date of the 29th until filled. The goal is, for all the committees, obviously, it's critical to hire the right person, not only with the qualifications, but the fit for the institution. That's critical to fit in with the campus climate. And the goal is, unfortunately, with the pandemic, it throws in a couple wrenches as far as, you know, the open forums. But I would believe the latest, you know, we could potentially bring candidates to the board is, I think it's the September 12th meeting. However, if we have a really good search, we have a workshop at the end of August, we can call a special board meeting. My concern is, the longer, if we have viable candidates, the longer you stretch it out, you could lose them if they receive an offer from another college. I can also tell you that there are multiple colleges in the area. For instance, I can tell you COD has Robbs' position as well. So it's going to probably be very highly competitive in that search process. Kinky Key Community College, I believe, has an opening for VP of Academic Affairs. Prairie State has an opening, I believe, in Academic Affairs. So there's the competition because unfortunately, this is the time of year when, you know, I mean, when the colleges post is typically in the spring because people are retiring. So for us, it was just unfortunate timing. All of them have wonderful opportunities. I'm very happy for them, very sad for me. But we have started the process in hopes to come to the board late August, early September. So hopefully, that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion on these items? If not, Joan, would you call her all, please?
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Next item, 2.1.12. We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion and a second, discussion.
So my question for this one, 2.1.12, was I did not see it in the packet. How many candidates actually applied for this particular position?
It should be in there. I think there were close to 30. Yeah, so you should have received the memo. Joan sent it separately. 26 applicants applied, none of which were internal. And the recommendation, we had two extremely qualified candidates. It was a very difficult decision. And the recommendation is to go with Ms. Escortina Irvine, who will begin on July 13th.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
And Wanderlech?
Yes, and this is a very important-
Oh, extremely.
Very, extremely important.
I am so excited. Wait till you meet her. She's wonderful.
Good, so.
Okay, next item, 2.1.13.
Like to make a motion for discussion?
And we have a second? Motion and a second, discussion.
Yes, so this one kind of caught me a little bit off guard because we already, it's for an existing staff member. And when I saw what exactly, she already does a lot.
She does.
She does a lot, and she does a great job. But then to add more, I'm just thinking, could we give an opportunity to other? We have great directors that work here at director level. I believe before she got this position, at one point at this college, she was a director of like multicultural affairs here.
Oh, Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
A long time ago.
Yes, a very long time. Yes, a long time ago. So I'm thinking, I feel like we're giving the same people an opportunity to, you know, gain additional skills, which is good. But can we maybe broaden that and give other people a chance to, you know, take a stab at doing, you know, some of the additional duties that you're asking her to do?
So, so I'd like to respond to that. So first of all, Dr. Farmer is my senior VP with both Rob and Rand, Dr. Fletcher and Rob leaving. The initiatives that I've tasked her with is, you know, with the search for Academic Affairs, she's going to work very closely with Dr. Amy Gray as well to ensure that we have a seamless transition as we search for the new vice president. Obviously, it's critical with the COVID and bringing, you know, reopening the campus between the Academic Affairs and student development. So she's the one that's been working very closely with Dr. Fletcher all throughout. So it would make complete sense for her to do that. The co-executive sponsor with the Workday implementation, we have executive sponsors. And Dr. Farmer was already designated for that, but she is going to work with me, again, through the next, hopefully, few months, that she will learn from that piece. And then when she takes that over, eventually, she will, you know, it would only be a piece of that. The strategic plan, again, that was under Dr. Fletcher's leadership, and he left. And so at this point, she's going to ensure that the strategic plan and those initiatives with that committee go forward. And then the serving of the executive steward of the diversity and inclusion. And what I mean by that is she's going to work very closely with me for the onboarding process of Escortina. Because from the personnel side, the extensive history I have and the background with everything that's been going on at the college from the employee side, and then Dr. Farmer is so, you know, oversees all of the student side. So it's, she's going to work with me with the onboarding, student side, employee side. She has, I understand what you're saying. She does a lot right now. I, you know, I have to say, all of my cabinet members right now are burning the midnight oil. They have been for three and a half months. But because of some of the initiatives that she's been working on, it's a natural transition for her. Now, I can tell you, you know, there are employees, for instance, Judy Connolly is the interim Executive Director of HR. Within her department, one of the employees will receive a 3% stipend because he agreed to take on, and that doesn't have to go in the board book because within policy, it's less than 10%. So he will receive a 3% stipend to take on some of those initiatives. We look at, you know, Jeff and Pat, in particular in Rob's area. You know, this is the first time we split that. But in light of the pandemic, the work that Pat has to do with the pandemic and the preparedness for the campus community and what we have to do, we just hired our new EHS manager, Kara. He is in charge of onboarding Kara throughout that process and helping her become acclimated to the campus. And Pat's my conduit with the day-to-day oversight, working very closely with Mel Cornelius on the pandemic as well. Jeff, on the other side, wears the financial hat. Jeff is the one who's going to be working with me weekly on, you know, budget if there's something goes on this state. If it's with the pandemic, the CARES Act funding, he's working with me on that. He will act as the treasurer of the college. He's going to work with the ERP, tracking for the financial piece. And Jeff is actually taking on some of the leadership role at the ERP level, much like Judy Connolly, where it was Melinda and Rob, now they're moving up. So is it, Jory, you know, Jory Kolzak, faculty member, having the opportunity to step up and serve as dean. What I did is, you know, fortunately, all of my cabinet members, again, are, were so, so solid, they worked with me and gave their recommendations as to who would better help. It was an easier transition to get through this next three months. But Trustee Morales, just in general, if there are employees that are, you know, picking up, for Workday, for instance, we have leads, leads that are, the time commitment for these employees is significant, over and above. They will receive stipends for that extra workload that they're taking on, covered within the budget for Workday, so it's nothing outside of that. It's covered within that. So we're doing our best to try to recognize employees, whether it be stipend. And again, I would love to continue to work towards promoting and succession planning internally. We hear that all the time. But we have to look at our policies and our practices and go back to where we were. I think it was with Dr. Prue, we had that. And then with Dr. Daniels, it changed. So we need to look at that, absolutely. I hear you. But in this case, I strongly, you know, Dr. Farmer, she's, she and I have been working together for nine years. And she just has been, you know, she's, she's been working with me simultaneously and side by side for all of these initiatives. There's, it's, it's just a natural fit.
I'm just saying, like, I know the existing executive or director for multicultural, they are multicultural office, student affairs, so they work very closely with students. But at a director level, they're also working with our staff and to give that person an opportunity to take on additional responsibilities and help. Right now, that we're really short-staffed.
We are short-staffed. And you know what? You know, this is a conversation that we can talk about. And, you know, I've talked about with the cabinet that we need a way to recognize truly so many of our employees that have just gone above and beyond. You know, there are people who think that when you work from home and you're working online or remotely, that it's less work. Oh, my gosh, that is completely opposite. You are on the clock, you are on your phone, you are texting, you are emailing. Our communication center, the people that are calling back, our chat lines, they're responding to our students 24/7. I mean, the entire college, which you would not support me on, deserves a huge raise. But I will figure out how to do that. We will figure out how to do that, but I hear you. We, our employees deserve to be recognized because they are doing a phenomenal job.
But on the other side, everybody should be grateful that nobody has been furloughed or had to go file unemployment.
Exactly.
Thousands of people have filed unemployment, nobody here has.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Dr. Mitchell, just to make sure that this is correct.
Yes.
This is a temporary six-month-
Six-month, yes.
That's it.
Yep, okay.
So sorry, I just, I'm so passionate about what we're doing right now and the work that we're doing at this college. I could just talk for a long time.
Again, I just want to see other people get an opportunity to showcase their talent and skills. We have a lot of great talent here.
We do, absolutely.
Just give people a chance to showcase that and give more opportunity to, you know, to grow with the college.
Absolutely, I hear you.
Okay, that's all.
Is there any other discussion on item 2.1.13? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Moving on to item 2.7.3.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Yes, my concern, it was a combination between 2.7.3 and 2.7.4, but we can break it individually if that's what we need to do. So basically, for 2.7.3, if we approve it, we're basically going to be sending them a written notice that their position is terminated, correct, by June 30th?
I'm going to defer to Judy Connolly and Dr. Farmer for the grant-funded positions.
Sure. This is Judy, take a stab at it. This has been a formal process that the college takes. We have basically employees on two cycles of grants. We already did the fiscal year employees earlier in the year and just recently reappointed them. And these are the ones whose grant ends at the end of, like, the academic year, August. So yes, they do get a formal notice. They are used to receiving this. And then we will bring them back to the board for this formal action to reappoint them. So they get non-appointed and then reappointed. However, we also have a new policy en route, I believe it's here for your first reading, on grant-funded employment that would allow us to not have those, that formal process of appointment and reappointment. We would communicate differently upfront on an annual basis from HR, that you are under a grant-funded position, and you'll remain such and such until otherwise notified or if the grant changes. So this formal action of going, getting the letter, renewing, it creates a lot of anxiety among the staff. So we're kind of proposing a little bit different method with more touch points from us internally rather than having to bring them back and forth to the board. But likely, Dr. Farmer can speak to the grant. I think it is predicted that this grant will renew. It might even be a multi-year grant. But just in past practice, this is how we have handled the non-appointments and then reappointments.
Absolutely, Judy, and you responded to the question quite appropriately.
I think, I think Nancy, this is a yearly thing that I think I asked this question last year about these positions as well, so.
Yeah, I was concerned. I was concerned because again, as Judy, I believe, you just mentioned that it creates a lot of anxiety if you have employees that do not know if they're going to come back. So I was just thinking, did we take a look at other sources, other sources of funding So I was just thinking, did we take a look at other sources of funding so that way we do not have to let them go or we don't have to give them an official written notice while we wait for that grant to kick in?
Absolutely. So I think, I'm hoping this is the last round under this cycle if we have the new policy and corresponding procedure. Also, you know, internally, we've changed a lot. We have people dedicated towards grant. We formally identify grant managers. We want them to have the responsibility to say, hey, HR, this is, or, you know, it looks great, we're probably going to renew, you know, we'll proceed as normal. And then bring, when they're not, though, to identify that early enough that we can be working with the employee on appropriate notification, drawing down their sick time or vacation time, whatever they need. And just, again, this is, we surveyed our peer colleges, many of them are not using this type of thing. They just made it into a policy, people hired under a grant are under their grant until otherwise notified and stop with the annual kind of notifications.
And quickly, Trustee Garcia, I do appreciate your sensitivity and your comment. I will let you know that I've already spoken with the grant staff members. This is a process, they understand it's a process, but this is a grant that the college has had for over 20-plus years. So we do anticipate receiving information from the Department of Education moving forward. But I really do appreciate your comment. Thank you.
And Nancy, just to let you know that former trustee Annie Mahalich reminded me several times that I let him go and hired him back, like, about 25 times. Because it's just, it's just a formality, is all it is. But any other further discussion on this item?
No, not from me at this time.
Anybody else? Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes.
Item 2.7.4.
So moved.
We have a motion. Motion and a second discussion.
It was connected to the last one as well, but we already went through the process, and my concerns were answered, so I don't have any additional discussion for that one.
Same thing, any other discussion? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Moving on to item 4.6.
Can I change, I'd like to make a motion for 4.2.7? To pull that for discussion?
4.2.7, okay. I didn't have that circled. 4.2.7.
Is that one pulled out?
No.
It wasn't pulled out.
It wasn't originally, that's why I'm asking if I can still do that.
No, because it's done.
Yeah.
We already approved it. We can re-approve it, can't we?
It's already been approved.
It's already been approved.
Okay, well, I still have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, it doesn't mean we can't talk about it, right? It's been approved, that's fine. I'm not against it not being approved, because I would have supported it anyhow, but is this, is this training going to be optional?
No, the, okay, so the original contract that we came to you on March 11th is to conduct a cultural sensitivity training for every employee on the campus. It'll be mandatory. The, this 10% overage, so we had brought Kaleidoscope on the college campus in the past two weeks after the George Floyd, the tragic death of George Floyd. And it was important to bring them on campus and allow employees to have an opportunity to talk.
You mean virtually?
Correct. And so we had that contract. They want, we would like to continue those services because we still have a lot of work to do on the campus. So this Phase 2 contract will allow us to continue this work through July and August, and then they also, they have a contract to train all of the employees. So this is 10% over and above their original contract.
Right, I guess because some of these virtual meetings, sessions that took place were very, my understanding is they were very poorly attended. So if we're investing a lot of money in this, we need to make sure people are going to these so that we can make sure that they're effective.
Well, right, and the first, when they went out, it's, these are not mandatory, they're optional for employees. But what we did hear after, like, the third session, that some employees said that if they come back, they would like to attend. I think sometimes, you know, employees may be apprehensive. So that will be included in the Phase 2. Now, you know, we know that the governor announced Phase 4, so, you know, I'll be talking with Kaleidoscope regarding the first round, and then we'll talk about that. If we can schedule the online, if employees are willing to come back and we have the social distancing, you know, there's.
Willing to come back, they better come back.
Well, right, so we'll have those conversations, but this allows me to carry on that Phase 2 of this initiative.
All right, yeah, because I would, if it's going to be something that we're investing over $140,000 for.
Well, that will be, you know, that we will do on campus, and I think that training's going to take a year, year and a half, because they want to make sure that they're meeting with these groups. It will be a lot of smaller groups. It won't be like training 1,500 people, we're going to have.
Right, and, yeah, it won't be effective if you're having, you know, big seminars, but if we're doing smaller groups, I think they're more intimate and people are more willing to be open, but they should be attending these sessions because otherwise we're wasting
No, the large contract that you approved in March will be mandatory for all employees.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was my question for that. Now we can go to 4.
4.6.
Isn't 4.5 the next one?
No.
Not on the consent agenda?
It's not, that's the budget.
Yep.
So do you do the budget before the others?
You can take them either order. If you want to do all the ones that were on consent that you didn't approve and then go back and do 4.5, but you got to do 4.5 independently at some point.
That's fine, we'll do that.
Okay.
Or she won't have no budget.
So I'd like to lump all, well, yeah, we'll do one individually. Okay, so 4.6. On that one, my question is.
Motion in a second.
Okay, I'd like a motion for discussion, please, on 4.6?
Motion in a second, okay.
Thank you. Is this the one where we're, this is a resolution to transfer funds from the Working Cash Fund to the Education and Operations and Maintenance Fund? And we're moving, like, $5 million and 1, and 1.7 in the other, and is this because of the taxes that came in? Is that what this is? Because we're only working with the June taxes and then the other ones will come until October?
I'm going to defer these questions to Rob Gallick.
So the Working Cash Fund is, I believe, a total of $6.7 million.
Correct.
And that fund was created, it goes back decades. I believe it was created in the 1980s. And most, if not all, community colleges took advantage of the state law that was created that essentially gives community colleges the opportunity, gave community colleges the opportunity to levy property taxes to create this Working Cash Fund. So to start with the 6.7, from way back when, the money came from a property tax levy. Okay, so that's where it comes from. The reason for the fund is, goes to Trustee Morales, what you were asking about. It recognizes that we spend money pretty equally over the course of the year. It's, you know, most of our money is salaries and benefits, and so it's a pretty straight line in terms of how we spend money. The revenue comes in at peaks and valleys. You know, there are some months where we have very little revenue and other months when we get tons of tuition revenue or tons of property tax revenue. And so because of the peaks and valleys of the revenue, sometimes if you don't have a lot of cash on hand, that creates cash flow constraints, we might have a challenge to make payroll. And so back in the 1980s, when this money was levied, it was, the intent was to give colleges a cushion so that they can absorb whatever peaks and valleys that might come from revenue. And so that's where it comes from. And so the resolution, we're required by law for the board to pass a resolution that basically allows us to transfer the money from the Working Cash Fund to the Education and the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and at the end of the year, we got to transfer it back and then do the same thing over again the next year. And so that's all this is, it's just an accounting entry, basically.
It's common, it's totally common.
You're taking out of one pocket and put it in the other pocket. There's still both your pockets.
And the reason we have to approve it is because that's part of the requirement. We have to approve moving it.
And I will say, the approval does not give us the authority to spend it. That's not what this is about. We're not spending.
Okay, because then I do have other questions on expenses, so I was wondering if that was connected to the expenses that we're being asked to approve also?
No, it's completely unrelated.
Okay.
And even if we, if we had a cash, we don't have any cash flow issues, but if we did and we had to borrow from that fund, we would be required to pay ourselves back to reestablish the fund. So this is not at all tied to expenses in any way.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other discussion on this? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes.
Item 4.7.
Yes, motion for discussion, please.
Motion and a second, discussion.
So this surplus, and I think maybe you might be the one to address this, Dr. Gallick, is this says here, it's for, there's a surplus resolution to authorize the treasurer to transfer the amount not to exceed the current year's surplus from the education fund. Do you know what that surplus is approximately?
I have a concrete number, because we're still, we will start closing the books on July 1st, so I don't have a specific number, but I would estimate it to be in the $6 to $8 million range.
Oh, wow, so we really don't have a cash flow problem right now. Okay, okay, that was my question for that one.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes.
At a 4.8.
I think 4.8 was pretty much tied to 4. Oh, sorry, motion to discuss 4.8.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I think that was pretty connected to 4.6, so I have no further questions on that.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes.
Item 4.10.
Motion to pull 4.10 for discussion?
Motion and a second, discussion.
Okay, so this is for, we're being asked to approve expenses for the safety, health and safety keyless entry phase, and I believe this is for anywhere, am I reading this correctly? This is, the cost is going to be anywhere between 25 to 125?
I'm actually going to defer all of these to Rob Gallick. These all fall under his area. Welcome, Rob, your last meeting, you're going out with.
So what's the question, Trustee?
So, is the, are we being asked to, it says the estimated cost is 125, but then somewhere else I read it was 25 up to 125.
Do you know what page that was on?
I'm on 410.
410.
So I see the.
This one just says, it is one, so it is 125.
It is 125.
Okay.
Three separate projects, and the first one listed the Phase 12 is 125,000.
So, okay, so if we're having to transfer funds from one account to another, the keyless entry, we're not using the building currently, right, Dr. Mitchell?
Well, we still, we.
Right, but is there, can we delay this expense?
The funds are covered for the keyless entry? It's not, it's not, it's not new money, doesn't it fall under the?
So what this is, we have keyless.
Right.
Cards all over the place, and so it's a multi-phase, many, well, we're on Phase 12, I don't even know how many phases there are left to do, but there's, we do a little bit every year to cover the entire campus. And the objective of all three of these agenda items, 4.10, 11, and 12, is related to capital projects. So we have a capital improvement plan, the CIP, that lists out all the things that we need to do to take care of our facilities, okay? And so the point of these three agenda items is to give the board, or give the college the authority to do a property tax levy, a protection, health, and safety property tax levy, which we've been doing, again, for decades to help fund the capital improvement plan. And so every year, we bring to the board different projects that we'll use to do the levy that ultimately, the money will be used to fund the capital projects. And so we're required by ICCB to submit some paperwork that describes the nature of the expenditure, make sure it qualifies as a protection, health, and safety project, and ultimately, we need board approval in order to have the authority to do this type of property tax levy. And so that's what all three of these are about.
Thank you. Okay, so it is a 125?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that was my question.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan Colerole.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes.
Item 4.11.
Yes, 4.11, a motion to pull 4.11 for discussion?
Motion, second, discussion.
So this is for, we're being asked to approve $785,000 for an expense to provide cooling for second floor of G Building, correct? This is right above the campus police, I think, right?
Yes.
What are we, it just, it seems like it's a lot, what we're spending for that, just that small area?
It's not, I mean, that's the cost of replacing, I mean, when you think of the size and the capacity of the building, and, you know, the buildings, again, we have deferred maintenance ongoing, you want to ensure that we have air conditioning, heat, to supply all of our, you know, all of our campus sites, and there are specific breakdowns and throughout the size of our campus. Rob, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but it's just, it's a.
Yeah, these are for air handling units that will help move the air to heat and cool the space. This is a little bit outside of my area of expertise in terms of how the price and how the quote was, estimate was established, but I believe Pat Van Dyne is on the call, and Pat, if you can unmute and if add any additional detail to how the estimate was derived and the nature of the project, that would be much appreciated.
Pat?
Let's see his initials up there.
He was calling in, I thought.
Yeah, he had called in, so maybe he used the public phone-in number instead of.
Would you?
0314 is his last three, last four.
Oh, Pat Van Dyne?
Start 6, turn unmuted, start 6.
Oh, he's muted.
Oh, he is unmuted. Pat, are you there? Can you hear us?
Hello?
Oh, there he is. Pat, did you hear the question, Pat?
I did hear the question, and the way that the estimate was derived was based upon previous estimates of air handling unit replacement. The second floor of G also is the old gymnasium that has never been air-conditioned, so that adds a little bit of extra work to that space. And also, the reason we're doing that one at this time through protection, health, and safety funding is in connection with the campus police renovation down the road. That way, they all tie together and the system works seamlessly.
Thank you. Did we take bits for that also?
It has not gone out for, this is just, this is just sending it through, showing you that that's a project that we have put on the docket for this year, so it has not been, it has not been bid yet.
Wow, okay, and then it also says here that, for the, this is determined in a certified estimate of a licensed architect. Who's the architect? Do we have, we don't know yet at this point?
It would all have to be bid out. Once the board approves tonight, then they'll move forward with.
Okay, no further questions?
That's for all, that's for all four of the protection, health, and safety projects.
Thank you.
At least, I say, being in the heating and air business, we've done a couple of rooftop units, and for the size of the building, it's very expensive for this equipment, and if you want to do it, you have to have a prevailing wage, so that's very expensive too, it takes a lot of hours, so you're looking at a little high cost on this, so this is not a cheap project.
The one, the one thing.
And if I could.
Go ahead.
If I could add, you'll see over the next few years, probably, air handling units being replaced all around campus because they have reached their useful lifespan. So we have a number of air handling units, all, like, 86 air handling units across the campus that are from the early 70s and are all pneumatic controls, and they're just and, and they're just outdated, and they, they've reached their useful lifespan, they're rusting, those types of things. So, um, the board should be mentally prepared for seeing these projects going forward as we can afford them.
Pat, what's the average useful life of these units?
Thirty years.
Thirty years? Is that what he said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And the one thing I have noticed from being on the Buildings and Grounds Committee for several years is that the, the guestimates from Pat Van Dyne and, and the administrative people are always a little high because they always come in lower, so they're covering themselves, so they, they're, they're doing a good job. With that, Joan caller roll, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Item four point twelve.
Like to motion to discuss four twelve?
Motion in the second, discussion.
Okay. Again, I understand we're setting a budget here, but for a stage, I think that budget is really high. I don't understand how we're even allowing that amount for the, the, it's the, it's the little theater, right? The little theater? Is that where we're talking about?
Our big theater. I, I, you know, I'm sure they would like it bigger, but.
But it's in J Building, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ninety-five thousand dollars for a new stage floor, considering it's not just what, I mean, they use it for theater, for so many activities. Um, it's, and I would imagine, and Rob or Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but it goes beyond even just that, that stage area. I mean, there's just a lot of work that, that, that entire area needs, you know, uplifting. It's just very dated and.
Are they, are they going to tear it down and build a whole new one, or just repair it?
I, I can speak to that. Yes, the, the entire structure needs to go. There are, there are structural, structural elements underneath the stage that are failing. The, the top of the stage, um, they paint that, they sand it, they paint that, they sand it, and the, the oak finish that was, or oak flooring that was on there is completely deteriorated to the point where it's a safety issue for students because they're dancing and sliding, um, and, and it, the entire stage has to go and be rebuilt.
It's a lot of money. Okay.
Well, what, the other, the other thing I could tell you is that with protection, health, and safety projects, um, we do put these estimates out there, and as Chairman Wanderlake mentioned, if we come under, that money doesn't go away, that money gets repurposed the following year for another protection, health, and safety project. So it, um, it's not as though, um, it, we're wasting it. We're spending what, what the bids come in at, and, and then whatever additional is left, it gets reallocated.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan caller roll, please.
Morales?
No.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Next item, four point thirteen.
Motion to pull for discussion.
Motion in the second, discussion.
Okay, again, this is a, I guess we're calling everything now a health and safety, right? A health and safety, um, projects?
Depends on what budget line it's paid for.
Okay, so what line is this one coming from?
PHS.
Okay, all righty. Um, again, this is just, this one isn't as outrageous as the other ones. Uh, thirty-five thousand dollars for cameras, and this is, do you know how many faces we have still on that one?
Pat, can you say how many?
This is, this, this is another phased approach that you'll see ongoing forever. And, and the reason I say that is because we started putting in, uh, taking out analog and putting in digital in two thousand nine. And every two years, as I think, um, anybody from our IT department can tell you, things become outdated and, and they don't work the way they're supposed to work. So, um, with cameras, door locks, um, it, it's just going to be an ongoing process to keep updating them as they fail.
Okay, thank you.
And I feel these things are very important for safety of our students and staff, obviously, as well, so.
Right.
Hey, Joan, also Dante's on the phone too, so he's on the call, so just in case you missed him, so call him for a roll, so.
Perfect, thank you.
See him.
Any other discussion? If not, Joan caller roll, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Yes.
Hey. Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Okay, item four point five point one. Entertainer motion to suspend the rules temporarily to allow for public comment on the FY twenty twenty-one budget.
So moved.
Second?
Motion in the second. Joan caller roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wanderlake?
Yes. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the proposed twenty twenty-one budget?
This is for anybody in the public, right?
Anybody.
How would they know? I mean, is this, is this published on the website?
Public knowledge, thirty days.
It's on, okay.
It was published.
We lodge the budget after the last meeting, and then they can call in and.
Well, considering as a public person and not just a trustee, considering that the majority of our budget comes from our property taxes, I really would like to see us really look at how we're spending our money. I know we have repairs, but I just feel like every time this year, I walk out of here with, with, um, just feeling heavy about what we're approving, you know, it's millions of dollars, and this is on people's, on, on our taxpayers, it's on them. So, I, I like that stage for ninety-five thousand dollars, just because my husband works as a contractor and I see, you know, what materials cost, it just, it bas, just confuses me that we're going to pay ninety-five, up, up to ninety-five thousand for a stage. I, I don't get that.
A lot of work involved, but, uh, I understand, I understand your, your comments.
Well, unfortunately seventy percent is personnel, seventy percent of our budget is personnel. So if, if that be the case, then do you want to get rid of people? And that's the thing.
And we're a service, you know, I mean, we are in the business of service. We serve our students, and it is, that, that is the highest cost.
Right.
Um, for employees.
Right, and the only comment I have.
This is what we get for our taxes.
And the only comment I have is the insurance. That's the only thing that I would like to have re, readdressed.
And the days off, the sick days.
Pardon me?
The sick days. I think most companies give you three sick days for a year. They come in getting fifteen days off. It's, it's crazy.
Uh, is there any other public comments on the budget? If not, could I have a motion to return to public session?
So moved.
Regular session. Joan caller roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Item four point five point three. Uh, motion to approve the twenty twenty-one budget.
So moved.
Motion in the second, Joan call, discussion. If not, Joan caller roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlake?
Yes. Uh, moving on to item five, student development, no action required. Item six, new, old business, board comments.
I have one.
Yes.
I think we need to address, um, when we get our board packets, I think we need to address the timeframes again in questioning administration in regards to anything that's in the board packet, since we do get it a week in advance, and what the custom procedure should be on emails too, that we should go over when a board member sends an email. Do we include one, possibly BCC in somebody that we don't know? I'm concerned about any open meetings violation acts, because I've seen that one of our trustees has put one of the other trustees on it. I don't know if she's blind copied anyone or not, but I have a concern of an open meetings violation act that we don't know if it's been stemmed or not stemmed. I think we need to stop and allow only email directly to our CEO and let her address it back to the board so that we all know what's going on, so that's inclusive that way, but not restricted the other way, and possibility of an open meetings act violation.
I'll ask, uh, I'll ask our attorney to do a little research on that and get back to us.
Because Carl, isn't there a possibility if that initiator of that email addresses it to one trustee and then blind copies somebody else, that's three trustees involved in the email then?
Well, the problem that we have is whether or not that happens or not, it, the burden is on the public entity then to prove that it didn't violate the open meetings act, and it becomes very difficult to prove a negative. So from the staff and the administration side, we try, you know, we don't try, we stay within the, very well within the lines. We stay within our lane dramatically. So, you know, we can never control what happens from the outside, but to the extent that you limit that or you have specific guidelines and rules for that, that's always the best practice.
Well, I think we then should develop guidelines that if a trustee has a concern, that it doesn't include another trustee to overt that, and that the trustee that's writing the email to the president only addresses it to her, nobody else, and then she responds as she has been instructed before, and that's been protocol, to respond to all of us, so there's no possibility of an OMA.
I'm happy to review it and look at best practices. I mean, I know when you see some of the reports, you'll see at the very top in all caps, do not reply to all. That's why we put that stuff in there as a reminder and so forth, so. Happy to, happy to develop that.
Thank you.
And if we can have conversations, um, with each other, I mean, if, if I can talk to you separately without the entire board and that's not violating the Opens Meeting Act, I don't see a problem where if somebody's going to email the president and email and CC another one board member, that's not in violation. And then to impose all of these, it could be, maybe it is.
Well, whether, it, just, I, I think you're, you know, the, the Open Meetings Act says you can't have a majority of a quorum get together and discuss business. The problem that we often run into, and this is where it's an extension of what happens. Let's say you send an email to Chairman Wanderlake, and, um, you have another trustee on it, so there's three of you. It's not a majority of a quorum, it's, it's three of you, you're right there, okay? If that person, if one of those people then sends it to another trustee and they comment it, the PAC says that if you chain those things together, even though you, your initial comment didn't, that's where we run into trouble. So what we try to do is have that break in there so that that never happens.
Right.
So if you email the president and the president responds, the president responds to everybody with your quest, to, with the answer to your question, but there's no discussion among the trustees. So we don't want to follow that. So I would never encourage any trustee to send a communication to any more than one trustee at any one time.
Right.
Because that's where you run afoul. And I, I would never encourage email communication. The Open Meetings Act absolutely allows the trustees to talk to each other one-on-one, and I would always encourage that communication to take place. But once you start sending an email, you know, we all know the rule, once you hit send, you don't know where it's going to go. And, and you could be the tiny little snowball at the top of the mountain that causes the avalanche at the bottom. And that's what we work very hard to have never happen.
Right.
That, that's my concern.
Right, and I think that, well, I speak for myself personally, if I, if it's me that you're referring to, which I'm sure it is, I'm fine because I'm very transparent in whatever it is that I have to say. Um, and I will be, if I need to be held accountable, accountable and answer for something, that's fine. They can FOIA my email, personal email, anytime. I'd be happy to go on the record with whatever it is. But to impose, we already have all of these guidelines that we have to review. To impose more is, I think, taking away from the camaraderie that we should be able to have with each other, but sometimes we don't, but.
But when you say camaraderie, if one sends it to one.
The team building or?
If one says it to one, then some of us have been left out.
She's going to reply to all.
Yes, yes, she is going to be replied to all, but the question is, why does that one trustee decide to just send it to that trustee and her?
Because maybe we had a previous conversation about that?
It just, it just.
I was going to respond, I was going to make a comment on that.
Okay, I'll let you.
Um, okay, moving on, on our new business, we've got the first readings, the board policies, old business, we got. I'm sorry.
I was going to add something for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Nancy. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I wanted to discuss something that I have, I have sent an email to Dr. Mitchell about, about ways to support students that were excluded from the CARES Act.
Yes, I, I was going to, I was going to speak.
Go ahead.
I was going to speak about that under my chairman's report that I got the email from, a copy from you too.
Okay, um, would we leave it to that section, or can I talk about it in this section?
Uh, if you want to talk about it now, go ahead.
Okay. Let me go ahead and take a look. Okay. Um, I'll provide a little bit of information, and then we can go ahead and go from there if you guys have any questions or any discussion. So as you guys know, the Congress passed the coronavirus aid relief and, and economic security act, also known as the CARES Act, back in March of this year, that allocated funding to several areas of need, including higher education, uh, for higher education institutions. Um, the Secretary of Education, the way that they formulate the funds that are given to each college depends on the number of students at the college. In April and June, uh, the Secretary of, of Education published new guidelines on how colleges and universities should spend the mon, that money through the CARES Act in higher education institutions. However, the guidelines excluded several groups, including undocumented students, international students, DACA recipients, and other students that do not meet the guidelines for federal aid. And in May of this year, the California Community College system went ahead and took legal action against the Secretary of Education and because it limited the, um, the, um, the type of aid that they could provide to students. And last week, a big victory. Uh, on Wednesday, a federal judge ruled that the US Department of Education cannot place eligibility restrictions on California Community College about who or what students could receive emergency coronavirus financial aid. I know that at JJC, uh, the, uh, foundation has provided an emergency fund to help students that do not qualify, uh, through the CARES Act, but that's still not sufficient. Uh, we have a lot of students that, uh, do not qualify for the CARES Act based on the current guidelines, but they should be able to access those funds because they have a need for food or rent or basic things. Um, I just wanted to, uh, open up a discussion about partnering up with other colleges and universities in the state of Illinois and following, uh, some of the precedent, the legal precedent that has been put in place by the state of California, um, to sue the Secretary of Education about some of the restrictions put in place about how an, an institution can use their funds to provide emergency funding. And it's important to note as well that in the CARES Act, there's no language about, um, the students that are not eligible for, um, for emergency funding.
Uh, Nancy, I was going to, I'm going to address that under the chairman's report, and hopefully you can get some, okay, well, thank you. Okay, old business, new business. Third approval of third reading of board policies was a consent agenda. Uh, going on reports nine point one, anything from the foundation?
Um, trustee, our, um, Christie Mulvey wasn't able to attend the meeting last minute, but I know that the foundation exec board met last week, and the foundation, the full board is scheduled to meet in July.
Okay. Uh, nine point two, ICCTA?
The, um, we had a, a meeting again this past month in June, and, or in, um, May, pardon me, and, um, elected our officers for going forward for the new year. And the big concern focus right now is on what the schools are going to do for going back to school in the fall. Uh, because of the phase four, they're looking to see what phase five is going to bring on, and they know that K through twelve has already, uh, going to let the schools make the decision. They didn't say anything about higher education, so higher education is something that all of you, from what I understand, the presidents are working on that, to decide on each college and what they're going to do, whether they're going to have smaller classrooms with the spacing, the distancing, and going through the masks and everything. Seems like masks seem they're going to be the, the wearing of the fall. But it all determines whether you're going to do the online, the e-learning, or if you're going to go back to actual campus. And we're all still holding our breath on these, uh, Chicago downtown ACCT. Um, they said to register, they have all of us that they want us to register if we're going to go to it. It's all refundable, but ACCT is looking to see how many people we would get, and the hotels know that there's an issue there with regards to getting too many people, but they did say to try and register because right now they're trying to get a handle on how many would be going.
Joan's going to, Joan's going to contact everybody.
Right.
In the next, you know, week or two.
Right, so Joanie, they're looking to see, and they'll give you, they'll tell you what's going on when you do the registration too with the ACCT, because they're looking, because it's all reimbursable if anything happens where it is canceled. Because right now we're still in the I don't know stage.
All right, thank you, trustee Broderick.
I, for one, I will drive every day. I don't need a registration since it's so local. I'd rather leave that spot for maybe another person from out of state that needs that room, so you don't have to register me. I can drive every day.
Well, she still has to register you, yes.
Right, but no hotel, correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you on that. I think with regards to the hotel situation, I think they're trying to get a handle for how many are going to be there for the conference, not so much for the staying onboard. Um, and I know we're still trying to plan something for September for the ICCTA, um, awards because, um, some of us did get awards for, um, being involved, so that's something that's coming up too.
Uh, next item is student trustee. Dante, you got anything for us?
Student trustee has nothing to report.
All right, since he's left, Building and Grounds, Jake or Dan?
Has it there been a written report submitted?
No written reports submitted.
Sorry about that. Dan, Dan, this.
Sorry about that. Dan, Dan missed the meeting today, but I was there. Tonight, we approve the master plan architects for all the master plan phases. We're also updated on the project status. The parking lot for the South Lot G is just about complete. I think they're just putting the final finishing touches on a rolling hill canopy. There's been some slight issues on it, but they're working through it. I guess the framing is complete, but the metal panels are still out for completion. For the elevators in Building J and G, they are still working out the, the extent of the scope of work, but that hopefully will be completed soon. And then the boiler, there was another, it's about another week out or so, and we should have that here for installation, I guess. And then tonight, we approved the epoxy floors for the theater. I believe that's what it is, the J roof replacement. Actually, no, the J roof replacement was 100% installed. Sorry about that, I'm reading the wrong, wrong part. And then we also discussed Premier Events, which is our catering service, or Don Williams's business. And they're actually in the process of renegotiating the contract with them. They are a little bit behind on rent, unfortunately. The last one we received was March, I guess. March and April, I guess they're out, May and June. But I know personally that Don obviously applied for some federal funding and federal loans, and he was approved for it. So hopefully, he will be completing those payments as well. He's, we're looking at possibly doing another, another lease with him, because he's interested in it, and I guess he's built up his customer base for that, and everyone loves the facilities. Right now, I think we, we receive about $9,500 a month. Is that, is that right, Rob?
That's correct.
That's correct. And negotiations, I think they're looking at going to next, next year, I think they are looking at $11,000 a month. Is that right, Rob?
Yes.
So we're hoping, you know, with the pandemic, it's been kind of chaotic. We don't know what's going to go on with those major gatherings. But according to everyone, everyone I've talked to, Don Williams has built his business up pretty good there. So hopefully, we look at the negotiations. Rob was actually looking at possibly doing a possible incentive, not, not incentive, but what were you looking about for the one month of rent, Rob?
So part of the negotiations not only included the, the rent over the six-year extension of the lease, but also Mr. Williams was asking if we would consider waiving some, some of his lease payments in light of the pandemic and the financial impact that it's had on his business. And, and through that negotiation, we've, we've tentatively agreed to a one-month waiver of his July rent, but that would be built into the lease renewal. And ultimately, that, along with the, the monthly rent payments over the, the next six years, all the way through the year 2027, that is expected to be brought to the board in August for approval. So we'll have a more detailed report at that time.
And as also Rob said before, is those payments that he's missing will be made up and built into the, the, the new lease, so he will pay that back what he owes.
Right. Do we know if he did anything with the SBA for all of the stuff that was the?
He had mentioned he had applied for federal funding. We didn't get into any specifics of what source of.
Because that would have covered rent too, from what we understood, the rent and the operational expenses.
He had committed to use his federal funding to us to catch up three months' worth of rent. We haven't seen that payment yet, but we'll reach out to him in the coming week to find out where that stands.
Okay. What's the name of his business?
Premier Events and Catering.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I have for the buildings and grounds. We missed you tonight, Dan.
Sorry, I didn't make it.
Okay, next item, president's report.
Okay, so good evening. I have a few items that I'd like to highlight from, you know, several highlights from this past year. One, I'd like to acknowledge our PTK chapter of our students who received two awards at the 2020 Illinois Regional Meeting. They received the Most Distinguished Honors in Action Project and Most Distinguished Chapter, which is the highest of honors. In addition, the chapter received a Hallmark Award for the college project, PTK students organized and hosted a diversity and inclusion forum, which brought together members of the student clubs to discuss publicly what their experiences was like being a student at Joliet Junior College. So thank you to our students. We also launched a Spanish website, Spanish web chat feature, and expanded general web chat into the college homepage and other critical student development pages. I'd like to thank Kelly Roder Tinnelli, the IT team for working collaboratively on our website, as well as all of our employees that assisted with the conversion of all of our services to an online format. The college initiated new and enhanced employment recruitment strategies with a focus on faculty and adjunct positions this year. We offered numerous seminars and information sessions for current and prospective employees, and expanded sources of advertising and outreach. So Trustee Morales, this is, this is similar to what I was talking about, you know, from growing within. So we'll continue on those initiatives. Thank you to our foundation. The fund, the fundraising efforts have totaled over $3.9 million this year, with most constituent categories have increased over the previous year's totals. We've expanded our sponsorships. The alumni giving, employee giving, and corporate giving all received a large increase this year, and over $800,000 was given to our students through the scholarship program. Eight hundred thousand doesn't even begin to touch on, again, through the pandemic, the additional student emergency funds that they're issuing, the laptops they've supported, the internet cards, the food pantries, the food insecurity. So thank you to the foundation. Since the inception of the advising redesign, over 7,000 students have been advised, noting positive experiences with the department. Aligned with the advising redesign, the student wellness advocates served over 1,390 students, providing confidential personal counseling, crisis intervention workshops, group therapy sessions, and much more. I'd also like to say that I will be hosting a second open forum for the college community. The last one we held had over 500 participants in our Zoom meeting. The second session will begin with medical information and updates on COVID-19, provided from Dr. Atul Gupta. He's an infectious disease specialist at Silver Cross Hospital. And then we'll roll into the Phase Four plans for the remainder of the summer and fall. So Trustee Broderick, you had mentioned that the presidents would be talking, we have a meeting next Tuesday, to talk about those plans. In addition, we've had Dr. Farmer, and oh my gosh, I always go blank on the faculty member's name, that were participants with the ICCB Return to Campus Committee, and Noella De, Noella De Cruz. I knew it would come to me.
Noella.
Yeah. So thank you to both of them for their participation, and I'm very pleased to share with you. Dr. Farmer continues to say that JJC is a leader as far as what we've put in place and all the proactive measures that we're taking. So we're ahead of the game. Phase Four for us will look different because we have announced our summer and fall semester. So for phase fall, summer, we will finalize who, it will be a gradual increase of some employees to, again, expand our student services that we'll look at for July. We will also be bringing a few students back that will complete some of their clinicals or their lab classes as a part of the spring semester. In August, we'll have more extended conversations with cabinet members to see which employees will come back. Obviously, our doors will be open. Our lecture will continue to be online, but all of our lab classes will be on campus. We have done excellent work. Thank you to Rob and his team. We have the stations, for those of you that enter through G, every employee, every student will have their temperature taken. They will go, there's a chart there for the CDC guidelines, if you experience any of these symptoms. If you're an employee, you'll go home, contact HR. A student, she'll go home, you'll contact Dean Cindy Vasquez Barrios. But we are taking, we installed Plexiglas shields in areas where it's close. We've ordered face shields for employees that are, you know, maybe, you know, an IT support staff who's coming to work on your computer. We've taken every proactive measure. We have these, they're not guns, but they're spray equipment that will be brought for all of our labs. So in between the labs, we'll be spraying them down to kill all the germs. Doesn't harm, you know, the materials in the lab is safe for food. So we'll be training on that. Our labs will be separating the class. So again, we're ensuring social distancing. Everyone will be required to wear a mask if you're in a public place, if you're, you know, leaving your, your cubicle, if you're by yourself. So we are really enforcing and, and supporting our employees and our students, ensuring that we can, can promote health and their safety to the best of our ability. You know, I, I say this in advance, it's, it's inevitable when we open our doors, there will probably, and I, I hope not, but there will probably be a positive case. They talk about the potential, you know, second wave in the fall, but we're doing everything we can to be proactive, taking care of our employees as we go forward. So they'll, they'll have more information. The second, the next open forum will be for those employees listening on Monday, July 6. I'd also like to thank the JJC Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council, who led a collaborative effort to craft a statement to outline and specify the college's views that we will use to stand publicly in support and solidarity of Black Lives Matter movement. Thank you to the council for their dedication to lead this change and support the college's goals in the DEI plan. I want to thank, again, all of our, my cabinet members and those that have left. Rob, you're, you're on your way out. Dr. Fletcher, Melinda, thank you for your years of dedication and service. Wonderful job. You will be missed. We were, you will always be considered part of the JJC family, know that. Thank you to my cabinet members that are sticking with me. We'll get through this, we'll hire our replacements, and, and we will move forward. And then finally, thank you again to our Board of Trustees, to all of our employees and our students for your commitment to success at Joliet Junior College. As we move into the new year, we will continue to stand together in solidarity with the Black community, fighting for justice and equality in our community, and for the health and well-being of our country. And with that, I thank you, Chairman Wunderlich.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. 9.6, chairman's report. Again, I would like to thank everybody in the college's community through the pandemic and the other thing going on in our country right now. But I got an email, email. Yeah, I get, I guess it was an email, yeah, from Trustee Nancy this afternoon, and it was about what she was saying before about the DACA students in the CARES Act. I didn't get a chance to talk yet to the president and the administration and the college attorney, but we will, we will look at your suggestions and see if there's anything that the college can do, or go forward, or work with some other institutions on, on your concerns, Trustee Nancy. With that?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Since we didn't really get a chance to talk about it when she brought it up? So first, thank you, Nancy, for, Trustee Guillen, Garcia Guillen, for bringing that up. I think it's important that we have to at least try to, we have to try to have the conversation. These are difficult conversations. It's a reality that we are facing in our country with the inequality that is coming from the White House, and just the, the lack of humanity, I guess. So thank you for bringing it up. And, and yes, Chairman Wunderlich, I think this merits. If there's already been a precedent and another community college system, you know, followed suit, and they sued the Secretary of Education, I fully support that we continue on with that.
I just, I just got the.
Right. No, no, I know. I understand. Okay. But I just wanted to let you know my, where I sit with that too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then would you address the 48 hours?
Yes, and for, for Betty, and I'm not sure if you, if you got it in your.
I'd hector.
In your orientation, we get our, and it kind of goes back on what Trustee Broderick was saying. We got our, we got our board packets 10 days before the board meeting, or a week or whatever. As always, it's, it's been kind of an unwritten rule. But when you go through your board packets, if you have any questions whatsoever, contact myself or the president, or the appropriate vice president. But please, try to do it at least 48 hours beforehand, before the meetings, so the president doesn't get, or the, doesn't get overwhelmed, or she's got enough time to get ahold of the, you know, the dean or the vice president to get some answers to questions from, from different trustees. So we're not rushing at the last minute.
Right. That was the reason the packages were given to us, because when you look at the other colleges, the other community colleges, they don't, but they do have a policy. All of them have the policy that within up to 48 hours, you can, after 48 hours, it's then, you bring it to the, to the, to the board meeting, you discuss it. But the thing is, you don't want the board president caught off guard. You want to make sure she's aware. So even if she can't answer it within that 48 hours, you can send something to her to make her aware of it, but she does not have to respond until we get to the meeting.
And what I can just say to add on to that, so if the requests come through you or through me, when I get them, I will acknowledge that I receive them, I will look into it. And then as I've done in the past, I'll reach out to the appropriate individual, and then that response gets back, they're copied. And if there are other questions, you go with that, because that helps keep me in the loop of what the board's questions are, and to ensure that you're being responded to.
And I, I don't know if it's a formal policy that we have for the 48 hours, but it's kind of.
We did, we did, we did make it as a protocol, because at one point in time, she was, both she and Deb were getting it at the last minute, and it was like, wait a minute, you get these board packages well enough in advance that you can do it. So going back to that, the protocol should be up to 48 hours, you can ask. After 48 hours, it's, it's.
Bring it up at the board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other, the other question I have too, since you're the chair. When one of us wants to meet, we need to establish the protocol with someone else other than Dr. Mitchell, what should the protocol be? I thought we were supposed to have had Dr. Mitchell's approval to meet with any, like Rob or whatever. I think we need to readdress protocol as to if any of us are going to talk to someone about an issue of some sort. And I, I'll leave that to.
I mean, just professional courtesy, would just to give me a heads up, like, you know, Dr. Mitchell, I'd like to talk with Rob about something. Okay. Again, it keeps me in the loop, rather than them coming back and saying, a trustee came to me, and then I'm like, oh, I didn't know anything about it. It's just respect for my role and my position at the college, to make sure that I'm, that I'm, that I know what's going on within the.
Well, I think you should also be included. If you choose not to, that's your choice, but let the employee know, so the employee does not feel like that employee is put on by one of us that is coming to them to talk to them, and worried about their position with the college then, because we're coming to them. That's my concern.
And to go along with that too, if, obviously, any trustee is invited on campus at any time, just for, but just for, you know, protocol, you should call up Dr. Mitchell and say, hey, I'm going to come out to the college this afternoon to talk to you, or talk to, or go to the greenhouse, or go to the planetarium. Just let them, let, let anybody know if you're going to be on campus.
And you know what, I will say that, because in the past, and I'm not saying recently, just in the past, if there's a trustee on campus, obviously, all of the employees know who you are.
They do.
And so they get worried, like, why are they on campus? And, and so if I know, I'm like, oh yeah, they're here for the event, that's great. But, you know, it just helps with that, just so people don't become nervous.
I think it, it reduces the stress on the employee, wondering what we are doing and what the, the.
Even if you're just out here to buy a shirt from a bookstore or something.
Exactly. Exactly. It would be better for you to know.
Yeah. Well, if you're going to the bookstore, that's, you know, but if you're.
I know, but I'm just saying, if you come to talk to, talk to somebody in personnel or something, you know, we should, you should know about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, could I get a motion to go in the executive session for 2C1, 2C5, 2C11?
Somewhere.
Joan Colerole, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wunderlich?
Yes. And when we come back, there will be no action taken.